I will now call to March 7, 2016, Blue Springs City Council meeting order. If you would, stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you into the pledge of allegiance. Matter of fact, we're gonna change that. Scout troop, why don't you come up and lead us in pledge of allegiance? Yes, we have with us a Boy Scout troop, 763, from Chapel Hill Presbyterian Church. We're gonna have you come up here, and then when I cue you in, we'll have you lead us in the pledge. First, we're gonna observe a moment of silence. One of you need to be looking at me, so I can give you the cue when I start the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scout troop 763. Come back and see us again. Wanna welcome you in attendance, as well as those that are...have we gone live yet on our telecast? Not yet. But they can watch it online. Very good. That voice that you're hearing is from the back room. This is different than what we've had in the past, because the person that's running the controls, we couldn't see. Matter of fact, when we were at the annex, we had them in a closet. But now, we can actually have a visual contact, which makes it very nice, and it's so nice to be in this new facility that we have. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, I accept the motion for approval.
So moved.
They're second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Koubel.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation by the VIPs, and this is the Volunteers and Police Services. So who's gonna make that presentation? Sergeant, Sergeant?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Blue Springs. The VIPs, which is the Volunteers and Police Services, is an organization that was founded in 2002 after 9/11, in which President Bush formed a committee that said, "People wanna come and help. They want to do whatever they can to help their communities." So he authorized it. It went into motion, and it's been rolling strong ever since. Right now, the International Association of Police Chief...of Chiefs of Police, sorry about that, they manage the program. They oversee it. They ensure that all the regulations that President Bush put into effect are...remain in motion. And what the VIPs do is they provide support and resources for agencies interested in developing and enhancing a volunteer program. The Blue Springs Police Department VIPs was founded in 2008, they began, and since then, through 2015, they have donated almost 47,000 hours of service. Right now, we have 52 VIPs that are on our roster. They do a variety of different things. But in that...in last year alone, they donated over 4,200 hours. And the Board of Labor estimates that their salaries, which is an average from across the nation, would range about $23.07 an hour. With the 4,235 and 1/4 hours that our VIPs put in last year, would be $97,700 and some change. A lot of money saved for our city, for the citizens of Blue Springs. This is Mr. Don Wykoff. He's sitting in our...in the old VIPs office at our police station. He actually does a lot of services for us, but he maintains the false alarm system that the police department would do, and maintains all the paperwork. This is the new VIPs office that the citizens of Blue Springs generally are allowed in this to have. Allows the volunteers to come in, have computers to work on, a place to sit, and do the paperwork that they get tasked with. Major accomplishments from 2015, Mayor's Christmas Tree lighting. Yes, I did put that on first for you, sir. We did the march with the mayor. Made sure that was second. We have one volunteer that was nominated to be a civilian of the year for...and she actually won that at our annual police department awards ceremony. Our volunteers, they deploy and keep statistics of our traffic speeds with our smart trailer. They provide security and traffic assistance for various functions, such as march with the mayor, 5K runs that are held throughout the city, Fall Fun Fest, when Main Street shut down for different events. They are trained to help control that situation, which allows the police officers to stay on the street. They also assist with the annual shop with the Blue Springs Cop event. And right now, this past year, eight volunteers put in enough time that they will earn their service awards for bronze and silver, which is accumulation of how many hours they put in. They also, during Fall Fun Fest, contacted 1,100 people and introduced them to the FBI Child ID app. This is an app that people can put on their smartphone, and should their child go missing, they have the information right then and there. They don't have to go home and try to find the CD that was the previous system, and, you know, hopefully, they find it. But the Child ID...the FBI Child ID app allows them to take a picture of that child each and every day if they so wish to do. So at Fall Fun Fest, they contact 1,100 people and help them install that on their phones. They also helped with the liquor establishment education this past year. We went from a classroom setting to a online process. So volunteers went around to the various establishments that sell intoxicating liquors and showed them how to do that and helped them get set up for that. They assisted with the officers...Fallen Officers Memorial, and they assist with each citizens' police academy. Many of our VIPs have regular assignments. They include helping and dispatch answer non-emergency phone calls, alarm permits, tracking the false alarm reports. And once they reach the certain level, they send the information to finance for the billing purposes. They file reports, fingerprint cards, and the detective unit, and they work in the property unit as well. They help in our armory, helping track our...every police officer's training. We try to keep a very detailed training record of each officer's training. They help file that, keep a computer database, along with a hard copy. They work with our crime-free property unit. They also help in animal control. This is the smart trailer that we deploy and has become a very good educational tool for the public as well, because it...they may think they're doing 25 and a 25. In reality, they're doing 35 and a 25. So it helps educate that, and it also allows officers to stay on the street answering the calls, rather than running radar at every location. They help with various parking details. From the time our VIPs were started to now, they have more than quadrupled in the number of volunteers that have come forward to help out with the police department. We have four computers that they can work on in the office. They receive regular quarterly training. They pick up many duties that police officers would have to do that would save...that saves a lot of time for the public...for the police officers, so that the public can be better protected. And they just assist wherever, you know, if they come in, "Where do you need help?" is their first question they always ask. They just want to help. We were able to give them a vehicle to use for some of the traffic services they provide. It is a retired police car that was just gonna set. This way, it's put in use and remains in service. We have some goals for this upcoming year. We are starting a extra patrol request. If you go on vacation, would like someone to come check on your house, make sure no one's broke in, our volunteers are gonna start doing that, which allows the police officers to remain on the street answering the calls for service. They'll also drive through the parks, check on the businesses. We are gonna try to get them to work the information desk that is now in the police station to help direct people to where they need to go, call officers into the...if they need to speak with them, answer any questions. Our volunteers, they're very astute as to what goes on with the police department. And they're just gonna assist any way they can to make this a better community to live and work and visit. This is our VIPs, some of our VIPs, I should say, taken right where you sit. But in the audience, we have a fair amount of volunteers. Would the volunteers please stand up? Mr. Mayor, if you'd please sit down, and any of your councilmen you'd like to come with you?
Run down, join us.
So who is the official photographer? I don't see Chutney. Oh, you're gonna do it tonight. All right. Well, I wanna thank all of you for the service that you provide, and I think this check demonstrates the level of service that you provide. Now, one of the things, I probably have a request that I need one of the VIPs to guard my office, 'cause I haven't catched those other checks yet. We'll get three of them. Mr. Mayor, we would like to present this replica of a check for the 4,235 and 1/4 hours the volunteers worked that represents more than $97,000 saved to the city of Blue Springs. Thank you so much, and thank all of you. (applause)
I'll take one of everybody. If you guys can all hold on one second and give me a big smile.
Do I need to tighten it up a little bit, or you got a wide lips?
No, you guys look good. I got you all in there. Ready? Everybody smile. Thanks, you guys look great.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. You bet. (laughter) All right, that was nice to be able to accept that on the behalf of all the people that give them their services. And for those of you in the audience, if you wanna participate, get with Sergeant, Sergeant, or one of the people, and they can certainly sign you up. We'll let them be excused, and then we'll go to item five on the agenda, which is a presentation on community of all ages. So who's doing it? Scott?
Your Honor, our presenter's been delayed in her arrival, so if we could move that item to the end of the agenda, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to a public hearing on rezoning of property at 200 Northwest 11th Street.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to offer into the record. Exhibit one, city council information form with attachments, planning commission staff report with attachments, site location map, site aerial map, plat map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 6, 2016, the application with attachments, proof of ownership and public works comments, 185-foot notification map, name, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of the letter sent to property owners, the letter from David Roos, real estate specialist dated February 12, 2016, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and the 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference and the proposed ordinance. This is all the city has to offer to the record.
Thank you. Mr. Holly, on behalf of the city?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight is a request that the city has placed to rezone property that is located between 10th and 11th Street, west of Main Street. This is the former post office property. We are requesting to rezone it from general business and light industrial to the T5 urban center zone of the downtown development code zoning district. The site consists of approximately 2.4 acres. I'm sure you're all very familiar with it. The only thing really unusual about this zoning is that the post office is in the process of negotiating the sale of the property prior to this zoning being put in place. They'd like to ensure that that sale goes through and are therefore requesting that if the transfer...well, they're requesting that the ordinance does not go into effect until 180 days or at the closing of the sale, after which then the ordinance would become effective. If that sale does not occur within 180 days, they're requesting that that zoning not be effective, or that the ordinance for the zoning not be effective with that.
I think that microphone might not...I'm not sure if we're getting...it's kinda cutting in and out, so we might need to pull it up.
Okay. Again, the only thing unusual about this zoning request is that the postal service has requested that it be...that the ordinance be delayed until the closing of the sale, and therefore, what they have requested is for 180 days, assuming that the property closes within that time, then the zoning would be effective. If it does not close within that time frame, the ordinance would not be effective. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions, Mr. Holly? The council? Seeing none? Is the applicant present and like to make comments?
The city is the applicant.
We are the applicant?
We are.
For the post office?
We are the applicant, yes.
Well, since we are the applicant and you made the presentation, we'll go to the public.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing.
Your Honor?
Yes.
(laughing) I would just like to say that Cindy Miller, the president or the executive director of the downtown life organization, has had...and I have had an opportunity to talk to the prospective new owner, and are very, very supportive of these...of the wonderful things that are going to happen in that particular location. So I definitely would like to see this supported.
That being said, would you like to introduce it?
I would introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4413, an ordinance rezoning property from GB General Business and LI Light Industrial to T5 Urban Center Zone.
Will the bill be approved on first reading? Proceed to the second.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4413, an ordinance rezoning property from GB General Business and LI Light Industrial to T5 Urban Center Zone.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Koubel.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Passed unanimously and assigned ordinance number 4586.
Next, we have a public hearing, rezoning property located at 2450 Northwest South Outer Road.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Exhibit one, city council information form with attachments, planning commission staff report with attachments, site location map, site aerial map, plat map, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 6, 2016, application with attachments, letter of authorization, proof of ownership and site proposal, 185-foot notification map, name, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of the letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference and the proposed ordinance. This is all the city has to offer.
Okay, Mr. Allen, on behalf of the city?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Again, before you this evening is a request to rezone property at 2450 Northwest South Outer Road. That's approximately two acres in size. The existing zoning is GB General Business, and the applicant is requesting to change that to RC Regional Commercial. This property is immediately west of what is now Target Time, formerly All-American Fitness. That's a vacant piece of ground there on the south side of Northwest South Outer Road. Applicant did go before the planning commission at their February 22 meeting. Planning commission has recommended approval of the rezoning unanimously, nine to zero. It's before you hear this evening.
I'm not sure I heard everything you said, but I'm not gonna have you repeat it.
All right.
You were kinda fading out as well.
I can talk closer to this, I guess, but I'll defer to Watson.
Counsel, questions, Mr. Allen? Seeing none? I said it's not the applicant on this one, are you?
No. Asset Automotive and Mr. Coulson are available if there are any questions, so.
Okay. You said applicant is present?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you like to come up and make any comments, or are you comfortable that the council understands everything?
Comfortable.
Okay. Well, we'll go to the public.
All right.
Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4414, an ordinance rezoning property from GB General Business to RC Regional Commercial.
Move the bill be approved on first reading. Proceed to the second.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4414, an ordinance rezoning property from GB General Business and LI Light Industrial to T5 Urban Central Zone.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Koubel.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Passed unanimously, assigned ordinance number 4587.
Next, we have introduction and reading of bill 4415.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4415, an ordinance approving final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO 25th Plat, lots 164 through 166, and 178 through 181.
Move the bill be approved on first reading. Proceed to the second.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4415, an ordinance approving final plat for Parkway Estates, PRO 25th Plat, lots 164 through 166, and 178 through 181.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Koubel.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Passed unanimously, assigned ordinance number 4588.
That brings us to merril announcements.
I think we have the resolution.
Oh, present us here. Al's on the roll.[1408.21][1408.21](laughter) But we're gonna roll it back. Okay, now, we're gonna have the presentation on the community for all ages. Mr. Holly?
I would simply like to introduce Ms. Kathy Boyer Shijia. She will be the presenter tonight for the KC Communities for All Ages. We are looking at pursuing and participating in this recognition program, so we're pretty excited to see this come forward. Thank you.
All right.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople, for the opportunity to come tonight and talk to you about the Communities for All Ages recognition program. And I'm gonna run through just two or three slides that sets the...statistically, the trends of how there is an age wave facing our nation, and of course, here in the Kansas City region is no different. You may have already heard this statistic, because it's been around since 2011, when the first baby boomer started to turn 65, January of that year. And according to AARP Statistics and Research, starting in January of 2011, actually, it started with 8,000, but we're at the 10,000 boomers are turning 65 every day, and this will continue until 2030. And I'm gonna take you through the state to show the trending from Missouri's senior population. Not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but you can see from 2010 to 2030, the shift of the colors per county that shows that the shift is going toward more counties that will have a higher concentration of the 65-plus population. Kansas City Metro data shows the nine counties that mark services within our regional council area. Jackson County is showing almost...I'll have to look at this, almost a 57% increase. Johnson County is going to be experiencing the highest at 144%. And I'm told that one of the reasons that Jackson County is not showing, even though it's still almost 57%, is that there's already a high concentration of 65-plus. What we're seeing is, and I'm not sure what happened, we have a Blue Springs that showed the trending...let me just go forward to see if we...yeah. There's the Blue Springs that shows a 10-year comparison from 2010 to 2020, that's showing the projected increase of the 50-plus. So you can see that the green lines are showing that there is a significant increase that you can expect over the next...over the next...actually, now, it's just another four years. Hard to believe. But I also wanna draw your attention to the middle, which are the millennials, 'cause what has been pointed out to us is that the age wave of the boomers is just not a flash in the aging pan. It's not, well, let's just wait for the boomers to die off, and then we can go back to status quo, the way it's been. 'Cause when the boomers do start to leave this world, the oldest millennial will be turned 65. So we're really looking at our communities that will have a significant increase in older adults over the next century. But I wanna go back to these that are showing that we really are reflecting a community of all ages, that the 1990, and this is all ages, is showing sort of the pig and the python, where the boomers are starting to move up. But with 2030, this chart's now looking more like a stove pop...stove pie, where all of the different ages are gonna be more equally demonstrated as by this...excuse me, by this graph. So we really are becoming more over time, communities for all ages. So what does this mean for cities? When this initiative came to Mark in 2012, there was a realization really across the country that communities have been built as though we're all Peter Pan, we're never going to grow old. And so planning then, we're asking our communities prepared for having a significant increase in older adults, and what does that mean? So it will impact every department within all of our communities across the country, as evidenced by or as indicated by the departments that are on the screen. So over the last three years, with a significant grant that Mark received from the Pfizer Foundation, we partnered with the First Suburbs Coalition and developed a set of tools to help our local jurisdictions begin to be...become more intentional in their discussions and then their planning for the significant increase of older adults. And of course, what we know is that when communities are planned to meet the needs and challenges and interests of older adults, it really meets the needs of residents of all ages. So we developed a toolkit and a checklist, which I think you all have these in your packet, and then a recognition program that Jim, Mr. Holly, just referenced, and which I understand Blue Springs may be considering officially entering into that recognition program. The checklist includes and was informed by a national...actually, an international effort to help communities become and to look at intentional decisions and discussions. We were guided by the work of the Age Friendly Network. This checklist was pilot-tested in four communities, two on the Kansas side, two on the Missouri side. We actually condensed the list from eight topics to six topics. And the checklist is a big part of the recognition program, which I'll talk about in just a little bit. We have three levels of the recognition program. The first is bronze, and communities across the country that are entering into this discussion, which is really looking at how do we need to prepare ourselves better. We've learned that the initial step is to become more aware, and that frames the bronze level. And talk with Jim about what those... And talk with Jim about what those activities that Blue Springs might consider, and as we go a little bit further into that, there'll be your input as well. But it's a series of activities over the course of four to six to eight months that really, that increases the awareness of what this means to have more older adults. I hate to see the young folks leaving because eventually, they're going to, well, they'll benefit from the work that you do over the next couple of years. But there are awareness activities that are presentations to residents, presentations to planning commissions and other commissions. There's resident-focused groups, there's, well, there's a series of work that will, Jim will help define with you all what those activities would be for Blue Springs. And then the next steps to participate in this program is a commitment to participate officially, and that's in the progress, and my presentation here tonight is a piece of that. A council presentation and a resolution, which is a requirement for the bronze level, and that's in progress. Identify leadership, and I've put completed because I think Jim, I don't know whether Jim drew the short stick or the long stick or whatever, but he's been fantastic to provide leadership so far with Mark. And then develop a bronze level plan with Mark's assistance, and that would be in progress as well. We have a couple optional activities that communities, and if Blue Springs participates in this, this will, we started with four pilot communities, where now you would be the 11th community that is decided to become intentional in your discussions and your plans, projecting a significant increase in older adults within your community. There are bimonthly meetings with the other cities, they're kind of peer support meetings that Jim and others from Blue Springs could attend and listen and learn from what other communities are doing. We've also developed a Communities for All Ages Professional Network, where we have workshops that drill down on topics that are in the checklist. The next one actually is this Wednesday on applying an age lens on major community plans, and Jim is actually going to be a presenter at that workshop. The next two levels of the recognition program is the silver level, which is essentially designing or assigning a task force or an existing commission or committee to do a self-assessment of the checklist. And that's essentially going through each one of the policies and actions and asking, do we have this policy, do we not? Do we have this action, do we not? No judgment, and then issuing a report on the findings of that. What we've found with communities that have gone through the silver level, both in the pilot and those that are officially doing this now, is that it leads to deeper discussion. And I'm pulling this out of the air. If the practice might be to have a park bench on every block downtown. And through the self-assessment, there's a realization that, no, we don't have a park bench. Why would that be a good idea? Let's talk about that. So that's a really simple example of what kind of bubbles up as the task forces go through the self-assessment of the checklist. And that process can take anywhere from six to eight months, because it does take time for folks to really think about that. The gold level then, after completing the bronze and the silver, is to apply an age lens to one of the major city plans. And in the case of Blue Springs, it could be that that's already been done, but to document how an existing plan has had an age-friendly lens applied to it. So I went through it very quickly, and I can go back to any of the slides, but I just wanted to give an overview of what the recognition program entails. The biggest commitment from communities who venture into this process is really the staff time of the person who's this, has been delegated to. Over time, more staff will maybe participate in a staff training to go into a little bit deeper about how does public works, how does the fire department, how does police, how does park and rec? All of the different departments, what are the kinds of questions, what are the opportunities that face their departments in looking over the next 30 years, 50 years? But the most significant contribution is the staff time of the person who is guiding this within the each community. And Jim, do you have any questions that you think I should be?
Council members, are there any questions, Kathy? Seeing none? Thank you so much for coming out and making that presentation. It's something that we are very aware of, and we've been blessed that, especially as we look at the aging population in Blue Springs, we've had new, two new facilities that opened. We have a renovation that's going to be taking place on an existing one. We have Vesper Hall that has a lot of activity, so I would imagine a lot of these things we're doing. And so, and appreciate our staff person, Jim, for being that lead person, you know, with Mark and with you, with the community of all ages. So thank you so much for being here.
And one of the comments that we get from communities that are maybe, what does this mean for us? What's the increased workload? Is it, in going through this work, communities do find that they're, they really are doing much of this work. They may just not have considered the age lens to the extent that it might have been. So thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Okay. There is a resolution supporting the Community of All Ages Initiative. We don't need anyone to introduce it, we just need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Third second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries, and it is adopted. Now, that brings the Merrill announcements, and unfortunately, I had everything all written out, and my kitchen counter is getting the benefit of that because I went right off and left it laying there. So I'm going to wing it. I just need to remember what I wrote down. I think we shared this last year, that February, as we left Black History Month, March is Women History Month. And tonight, I wanted to talk about, in my thoughts to ponder, two women that have passed on. One of them, most of you know, and you've heard it on the news today, yesterday Nancy Reagan passed, and she was basically a driving force behind the success of the 40th president, President Ronald Reagan. But she's most notably known as coming up with the phrase that Nike used, just say no to drugs. And no, I've used it a number of times in my comments as I speak to young people at their graduations. So anyway, she lived a long life, age 94, in her passing. So we certainly wish Ronnie and the rest of the family, Patty, I think, and the rest of the family, well, as they deal with the loss of their mother. The other person you probably don't know, and I spoke at a funeral on Saturday, a lady named Mary Rose Bland. Mary Bland is a true example of poverty to success. Mary Bland was the first person to welcome me in the House of Representatives when I was elected. She was a staunch Democrat, but she had heard these rumors about this Republican that just got elected. So she befriended me very early on, and we've been friends since. But she grew up in Niles Home, and she went on to be very successful, the first woman president of Freedom Incorporated, which is a political club in Kansas City, a state representative and a state senator. And her passion was caring for the youth, the poor, and the elderly. That's the legacy she will leave. And it just proves that it doesn't matter where you start. What matters most is where you end up. So I was just privileged to be able to speak at her funeral. Those are my thoughts to ponder. Next, we go to the visitor's section. But one of the things, before we go to the visitor's section, I want to acknowledge Nancy Yendez, who has been doubling as the city clerk tonight, reading the bills. Nancy is really our city attorney, but our city clerk and our city assistant city clerk are at a conference, and so we want to thank you for filling in. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Doing that tonight. So now, we will move on to the visitor's section. We have our fire chief, Steve Westerman, here to make a presentation, so welcome, Chief.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Good evening. I tried not to take very much of your time. I placed a card in front of each of your seats, but just want to touch base with you about a $4 million bond issue that's going to be on the ballot April 5th. This is no tax increase for the fire district, but several things that are much needed. And the majority of this bond issue is simply to replace aged equipment. Some of the items on there, most importantly, we run 75% EMS. One of the top things there is cardiac monitors. Those are 10 years old. While it may not seem very old, in 10 years, those monitors have run over 50,000 calls. And obviously, because of the new technology, and we don't want them to fail on a call, we want to make sure that they're replaced with new equipment. We also have on here in the second item, also EMS-related, there are new equipment that automatically lifts the cot into the ambulances or the med units. We have one of those units that's worked very well. It is not only safer for the patient, but is much safer for the backs of our firefighters. So we want to make sure that all of our med units are equipped with that. We also have breathing apparatus that we have to wear into any structure fires. The breathing apparatus that we currently have is over 20 years old, and soon will not meet current standards. While it may not seem very much, each individual air pack is $7,000. So a total replacement is about a $600,000 item. And it seems like any time you put the word "fire," just as it is "police" on a piece of equipment, the price goes up about 1,000%. So again, it may not seem like very much, but it adds up very quickly. We have a three-story state-of-the-art training tower. We recently received a Class II from ISO Insurance Services Rating Office. We are within reach of a Class I. So we're striving very hard, we can't promise that, but we're striving very hard to get to that Class I, and the training tower will obviously help us with that goal. We also have two engines that need to be replaced. They're 15 years old. Our policy is to keep them on the front line for 10 years, and then put them back into reserve for another 10 years. We've tried to be very frugal with the citizens' money, so we've kept them on the front line for 15 years, but because of the miles they put on each day, they are starting to show signs of maintenance issues, and we're having to take them in more often. So even though they move into reserve status, that 10 years, they still see quite a bit of use in that reserve status. We also, we moved to the 800 megahertz radio communications about eight years ago, and many of our portables are eight years old, just, again, age, technology need to be replaced. Some of the smaller items, but thermal imaging cameras, those are the cameras that we take into the structure fires with us to help see human bodies or any heat sources from fire hidden in the walls. Those need to be replaced, those are about 10 years old. And then, one of the most important things for our firefighters is just the gear that we wear. To outfit a firefighter is about $8,000, and that's complete helmet, hood, coat, pants, boots, gloves, and the radio, because it's a very important safety issue. But those, we need to replace those because those are aging also, because of the use that they get. I've tried to make it short and sweet. Again, it's $4 million total, but no tax increase, so we'd appreciate as much support as the city can give, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions, Chief Westerman? Seeing none, I just want to comment that you certainly, Central Jackson County Fire Protection District is a first-rate, first-class organization, and most people think about it in times of need, but one of the things they don't think about probably is their insurance rates that they pay for their homes are less expensive because of your classification as a fire district.
Yes, sir. We are a class, and insurance rates goes from a Class I to 10, four being the lowest for homeowners. So we're as good as we can get for homeowners. But the minute we can get down to a Class I, it'll save about another 10%, 15%, depending on the carrier, for commercial businesses. So, and that, from an economic development standpoint, that's typically a draw.
Yes. Thank you so much for the presentation, and certainly, each council member, I can't speak for them, but I'm very supportive of what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Good evening.
Thanks. Next, we have DJ Good.
Thank you for having me here. I'm here to discuss Jefferson Street's speed limit, and this will not cost you any money, not any additional money at least. There's already actually, you've got, the city of Blue Springs paid for a traffic study, which I requested the last time I presented in front of this council. And on the recommendation of your Director of Public Works and Trans Systems, your engineering, that the speed limit be raised for public safety reasons from 35 miles an hour to 45. And I just ask that that happen.
Are there any questions, Mr. Good?
Your Honor? Well, as the council liaison in the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board, you referred it to that board.
Right.
There was a very spirited debate that went back and forth, and their recommendation is to not raise that speed limit. Yes, the traffic study indicated it could be raised from 35 to 45, but several issues came up, Kohl's, the Dog Park, Lake Remembrance, and the fact that we did the study in the dead of winter and not in summer. I don't know if that would make a big difference, the consultant didn't seem to think so, but that board overwhelmingly voted to keep the speed limit at 35, and I would recommend we support them.
Any other comments? Let me ask Public Works, Chris, you're there. Are there any other streets in Blue Springs? Because I believe I read someplace that the comprehensive plan in the city of Blue Springs does not allow for 45 mile an hour speed limits. Are there any streets or any thoroughfares in Blue Springs?
There are three streets in Blue Springs that are 45 miles per hour, that are minor arterials, would be Pink Hill Road to the north, Double A Highway in between Green Valley and Adams Dairy Parkway, and then Witsch Chapel Road going into Lake Tacoma from 40 Highway. We've owned the first 1,100 feet of it.
Okay. So those are the three that we have. Yeah, because I was, after this report came out, I drove down Adams Dairy Parkway, which is one of the, probably one of the most traveled city streets, and I noticed that speed limit was only 40 miles an hour.
Mayor, can I address some of the?
Councilman Levisay?
Well, I was just going to ask, what would the process even be if we wanted to support this? Obviously, we can't vote on it tonight, so it would just be us instructing staff to bring a resolution, or?
Bring back a resolution, I suppose, that we could make a decision on.
Okay.
An ordinance. Yeah, we'd have to do an ordinance, not a resolution.
Okay.
We'd actually have to bring back an ordinance. I don't know, is there anyone on the council that desires to bring back an ordinance? Is there any support for changing it to 45 miles an hour?
I'm always supportive of raising speed limits as a general rule, so, so that being the case, I would tend to support something like that if it came up, but we're down a couple of councilmen tonight, so I don't even know if we can have a full discussion about where the will of the council is in general.
Anything from the left?
Your Honor, I would want to see, I would want to actually go out there and drive that and see what feeds into that particular section. I have not done that before. I would make, I want to make an intelligent decision.
This is not something we need to do tonight and make, there's not an urgent need to do that, as far as I'm concerned. So we'll wait, give the opportunity to study it a little bit. Meantime, just drive 35 miles an hour what the speed limit is, and then we don't have to worry about any citations.
Well, I think it's a matter of public safety. I would not have pulled, but you've probably driven on the interstate or any other road where somebody's driving significantly lower than the prevailing way, the prevailing speed limit, and that causes accidents, and that's why I'm here. And you have a report that you paid good money for, and you have a city, you've got a Public Works that recommends, based on the facts, based on the, they brought up the fact that, in the public safety, that it wasn't done. Well, the engineers, this isn't their first rodeo. They've done this. This is based on, based on traffic studies that they do around the nation. And this is an engineering group that you feel comfortable hiring. I mean, there are other engineering firms that you could have hired, but Trans System does a quality job. In fact, actually, one of the engineers was a former district engineer for the state of Missouri that now works for Trans System. So they recommend, based on the facts, based on the facts, that it be raised. And if you, based, if you disagree with the facts, then what you're saying is you're putting the public safety, there's a reason why they say that this is, this is the speed limit, should be the recommendation.
I'm not sure I would go that far saying- I'm not sure I would go that far, saying that if we ignore what an engineer tells us, that we're not following something, because it's our ultimate responsibility, is this governing body to make the decision on what we think is best for this city.
I, period. Understand that.
Okay.
Your Honor, I would add that this has never come up before. You're a non-resident of Blue Springs, you got a speeding ticket, you're upset about the speeding ticket, so you've started all of this process.
I paid, I paid the speed.
I know, but you got the speeding ticket, that's where all this started. There is no safety issue on that road. I don't think, Chief, you could correct me on this, I'm not sure it's an accident center, right? Do we know how many accidents there have been because of the speed limit?
It has not been, excuse me, it has not been an accident center. Most of the accidents in that area are related to the intersection, not related to the roadway itself.
The board that we referred to vetted it. It was a very long debate that went several different directions, and that board overwhelmingly voted to leave the speed limit at thirty-five.
I'll have to use that same argument, because in the meeting, the discussion, you used that same argument to keep the speed limit lower, on the flip opposite, that it, there weren't accidents because it was thirty-five miles an hour.
Why don't we do this, if there is a council person at some point who'd like to ask me to have an ordinance drawn, to adopt, to present to the council, to adopt, just let me know.
Do we have, have we been given that report, the Trans Systems?
Yes.
Yes, I've sent to, your buddy got a copy of it.
Okay.
Okay, well, look, we're not, we wanna.
And I appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, you're back, thank you. Now, I'm gonna defer to our city attorney now, who has been doing double duty, for a so moved motion.
Thank you, Mayor. The proper motion would be that the council go into closed session pursuant to Section six ten point oh two one, sub-paragraphs twelve and seventeen of the revised statutes of Missouri, for the purpose of having discussions relating to contract negotiations and confidential and privileged communications between a governmental body or its representatives and its auditors, that any votes, minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So moved.
They're second? Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kabel?
Aye.
Councilman Levise?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Do we need to do that here?
You're gonna, you're gonna ask.
Okay. We're going to be excused to a conference room for the executive session, so you can feel free to sit, relax, do whatever you want to do, because at the end of that session, we are adjourned.